I'll give you like another thirty seconds, I would start right at seven thirty. Alright, I am pleased to call the Dresden meeting to order. I apologize that we're starting half an hour late. First order of business this evening is to reorganize and in doing so, we will appoint a chair. So I will accept nominations for Chair of the Dresden School Board. Yes, Kim?
Nominate Rick Johnson for Chair.
I second.
Alright, we have a second, Deb, and any other nominations? Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote, starting with Lily.
Charnman, yes.
Rodelle, yes.
Hartman, yes.
Paul, yes.
Eddy, yes.
Nelson, yes. Barry, yes. McConnell, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Okay, Marcella?
Yvlosi, yes.
Kristy, yes.
Unanimity, re-elected. Moving on to the Vice Chair, do I have a nomination for someone who would like to serve as my Vice Chair? I'll keep the platform together and nominate Neil. Second?
Second.
Oh, any other nominations, sorry. Any discussion? I could just add that it does need to be a Norwich board member. By policy. Lily?
Charnman, yes.
Rodelle, yes. Cannon, yes.
Hartman, yes.
Paul, yes.
Eddy, yes.
Nelson, yes. Barry, yes. McConnell, yes.
Marcella?
Yvlosi, yes.
Kristy, yes.
Nelson, yes. Welcome aboard, Neil.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to Secretary, I believe that was, is that Kevin? So we're gonna need a new Secretary. We have a nomination. Neil?
I'll nominate Lily Charnman.
I second.
You were gonna nominate someone too?
No.
No, no, no. No, I, I'm third.
So, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go around. Lily?
Charnman, yes.
Rodelle, yes.
Cannon, yes.
Hartman, yes.
Paul, yes.
Eddy, yes.
Nelson, yes. Barry, yes. McConnell, yes.
Marcella?
Yvlosi, yes.
Lisa?
Kristy, yes.
And Johnson, yes. Welcome aboard, Lily.
Thanks.
So moving on to committee assignments. There's a list there. I'll take the budget. John had athletic advisory, so we're gonna need someone, so please just email me this week if you're interested in serving one of these groups. Evaluation, is that? What evaluation is that?
Teacher evaluation. It's been Neil and myself historically, I would actually like to step up, but possible because I've been editing the handover budget.
So what I'll do tomorrow is I'll send an email out to everyone at Dresden with the spreadsheet that we have with the vacancies on there. Negotiations not needed this year? It says teacher and support staff, and then someone wrote question mark.
It's service staff.
So we need a service staff negotiation.
For twenty-two, yes, I mean, for the year after this.
Good. Central staff development? Who's that now? CPP?
That's been me.
You still addressing Lisa?
Sure. Happy to do it.
And then finance liaison, Kim will take that. Great.
We have one more that's missing. Hartford.
Oh, yeah.
And council.
And council.
And council's been me.
NHSBA liaison?
I'm doing that for Hanover, I don't mind doing it still for Dresden.
Yeah.
Okay, we just had those. So NHSBA, Hartford, and Council. Lisa, are you, are you still interested in keeping Council?
Yeah, I'm happy to stay on Council.
And you're gonna take NHSBA, and then Hartford, who was Hartford before?
It was Kevin.
Kevin. You wanna take Hartford?
Sure.
And that, that's usually a ten o'clock in the morning meeting. It's only quarterly though, so.
I can do.
I'll send out an email, and if people wanna horse trade, they can do that.
Oh, I'm happy to stick with budget.
That's what I figured.
Thank you, Kim.
I just, that was just the assumption I made. Since you told us the chairs have to be on the Budget Committee, I already. So at this point, we're gonna move on to agenda review. Does anyone have anything they would like to move, add, or remove from our agenda today? Hearing none, we'll move on to the public may address the board. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to address the board tonight? Anyone at home? At this point, we're gonna move on to charity bagels. So I thought I was being pretty slick inviting him, but apparently the Valley News beat me to the punch this weekend. So I met Leo, I haven't actually met him, but I actually bought him, received a gift of charity bagels. I thought it was awesome. I thought what he's trying to do here at Hanover High School is wonderful, and so I wanted to have him kind of just explain to the board in our community what he's doing with charity bagels.
In the middle school.
Oh, I know.
Yes.
Elementary school, shouldn't be. Hello, everybody. First things first, I brought bagels. So it's, you know, seven thirty-five. Okay, seven and one last time.
Taking one home for tomorrow.
Yes. Um, okay. See if technology works. Oh.
Good nose.
Okay. Great. Alright. Love how it works. Okay. Hi, my name, oh. Take advantage of it now. Hello, everyone. My name is Leo. I'm a senior at Hanover High School. And I am originally from Los Angeles, California, moved here three years ago. And one of the things that I was kind of bummed about when I moved here was the paucity of delicious bagels. So I started making them at home. Pretty quickly realized, oh crap, you can make really good bagels at home. And then tried to sell them, realized why nobody else tries to sell them, because it's really hard to make bagels and sell them. And then it occurred to me in social studies at Hanover High School, entrepreneurship class, hey, what if I sold do yourself bagel kits? And I won't get in my own way, I'll just go from there. Alright, so this is a picture that I took at RMS about a week ago, two weeks ago. Where we ran a fundraiser to to support the Black Youth Project. This was in this was during February, and I had approached the principal, and we ran a fundraiser. Yeah. Before that, I did one at Hanover High School where we, all the funds that were raised through the bagel kits, and I'm gonna explain a little more about that in just a sec, went to offsetting the cost of prom for students who couldn't afford it. So, what is charity bagels? They are make it yourself bagel kits, and this is a, this is sort of the pitch that I would do if you were a school principal. Here's some pictures of the kit. I have a fully made one right here. And what's in the kit? It has everything you need to go from desire to a delicious dozen bagels at home from scratch. Enough to make the dough. Here. Finally there. Website with in-depth video instructions. Also, for those of you who don't want to get flour on your iPad as you're trying to follow my instructions, we also have printed instructions. We've had over two hundred and fifty happy customers in the Upper Valley. Here are some bagels that people have made and submitted. I should have put your picture on there, but.
I donated to the Keenan Elementary School.
Oh, it's getting cut off. Okay. So how did the fundraiser work? What was the fundraiser? What's this kid talking about? Um, so I approached a school, and I say, hey, I'm looking to do, I want to do a fundraiser with you for either a hyper local issue or some important national issue, and, you know, we're gonna figure out what issue that's gonna be together. And here's the, here's the idea. You, we write an email, and we send that out to all the parents and guardians in the district, you know, in the school. And we tell them, hey, if you make a donation of thirty-five dollars or more, you're entitled to get a bagel kit. And all of the difference between the price of the kit and the amount that they've donated, a minimum thirty-five, a maximum a million, you know, I don't know. All of that goes to the cost. As I like to say, it is a, it's like an NPR tote bag, but you can eat it and it's delicious. And at Hanover High School, a couple of weeks ago, we sold forty kits and cleared one thousand one hundred and fifty-five for the senior class to offset the cost of prom. And at Richmond Middle School, we cleared one thousand and fifty-two, I would say, and sold fifty kits. I like to say, risk-free, delicious and different. What could your school do with next to a thousand dollars? Thank you.
Can you also explain for non-fundraising, just if people buy it, and then how it works with donating or giving it to first responders and stuff?
Yes. So why is it called charity bagels? Why is there a bagel symbol of the G? Well, you're encouraged, if you make your dozen bagels, to put one over your head, take a picture. Because you're doing a good deed when you make them. When you make them, each kid is gonna make a dozen bagels. Most people aren't just gonna sit around and eat a dozen bagels at home. So for many people, you're gonna have one, you're gonna have two, you're gonna refrigerate one, but you know, you're kind of done. Even if they're amazing bagels, which as you tell me, as you'll tell you, they are. So the idea is, now you've used the kit, you have an empty kit basket, and twelve bagels, you don't need twelve. What if you take six of them, you take half of them, you put them back in the kit, close it up, deliver it to a local first responder, charitable organization, or emergency service near you?
Or teachers.
Or teacher staff. If you do.
Or superintendents.
Then you get half off your next kit. Um, what else about it? I, so I've done one at RMS, I've done one at HHS. My understanding is this school board is HHS, RMS,
That's it.
Ray, and.
Now, Hanover is the Ray School.
Oh.
Yeah, the members are here.
But they're all here, we're all on those boards too.
And then Marion Cross. So just talked to the principal of Marion Cross, and seems like there's a little interest there. The article did help. And, and pursuing it with the PTO at the Ray School. So I guess the reason that I'm here, well, I mean, first, I didn't know that these two schools were gonna want to do it, and who's gonna turn down an invitation to to have a bunch of adults, but but the other reason is because I just sort of wanted to ask you all who, you know, do lots of school stuff all the time. What would be a good way to go about taking it out of this school board into other school boards? Perhaps it could be having this meeting, but at the Lebanon School Board, or at the Mascoma Valley Regional mouthful, that, that one. Maybe it could be that. I'm just sort of a little curious about that.
So we have, we have certain restrictions that we can't be like pushing businesses and all that, but we can. I would assume with the newspaper article, I think you've got a very easy sell to the Lebanon School District, to the Mascoma District, so. I don't know if Jay, as a superintendent, can make introductions.
As seen on the Valley News.
Yep.
Yeah, so I, maybe a question back to you, like, can your operation scale?
I hope so.
Who, you're on tax with King Arthur right now, right?
Um, I might talk to King Arthur right now. Um, yes, I talk to them. I don't I don't know how much they talk back. I met with the CEO.
Before you, you don't need to answer that question. I guess my question too is, so I can I, I can, I have a potential of introducing you to all of the school boards in the state of Vermont. But I want to make sure before I offer that to you, is that something that you would want to have? Are you prepared for something like that?
Yes. Kids take twenty-four minutes a piece to assemble, so that'd be a lot of time in the basement making kits, but yes. You know, I initially started this, you know, through the entrepreneurship competition at Hanover High School with Dartmouth a while back. And one of the things I learned, because I did want to have a real business, and I still do, was, you know, if I'm selling an individual kit, you know, if I'm selling just one kit, I can't afford to have a fifteen-minute conversation to convince someone if you sell the kit for twenty-five dollars. If I'm selling the helicopter, maybe, but, you know. So anyway, yes, I'm interested in, in, I think it will work at this point. And if it doesn't, I'm just pivoting to find a way that it would.
Okay. Let me, I, so I sit on the Vermont School Boards Association. And through that organization, we may be able to introduce your charity bagel company to school boards in Vermont.
Alright.
But let me talk to my executive committee tomorrow, Thursday morning, and see what they're thinking, and if that's cool with them.
Thank you.
And you won the entrepreneurial competition last year at Dartmouth, is that correct?
Yes, Hanover High School has paired with the Magnuson Center, which is the new entrepreneurship thingy. And the seed money for the business actually came from winning that competition, which is really nice.
So you're doing all the packaging in your basement?
Well, you have family who has.
That's where it's located.
Yes, got it. Yes, and yeah, in the basement. If you go down there now, it's very organized, but you won't have a lot of space. If you guys wanna lick the kit or eat the bagels, that's why they're here. I did bring cream cheese and I brought a knife and they're all cut, so.
I may grab one in a second. So moving on to reports.
Are we ready?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, Theo, please, yep.
Okay. I'm Theo. I'm here in place of Kate McCall. So we council met on Wednesday. And we passed a couple of allocations, including one for the volleyball club by Annette. One for the Broadside to fund fourth quarter addition. And we discussed a core standardization policy, which would essentially make all courses of the same level standardize their retake policies, latest policies, test take policies, but I don't think we voted on it yet.
Thank you. So, was there any feedback you all received from the official naming of our new mascot?
Um, I would direct that question to Bobby Patel and Josh Stern.
Okay.
Um, I think, I think once the once the ranked choice voting was finished, bears had around sixty percent, so it was.
We noticed the Valley News picked right up on it immediately, so.
It hurt that Rob Grable was running around in a bear suit.
Had all our state championships, I heard.
Right.
I think it's awesome, because it will, a little head would sit perfectly in the middle of the turf field.
My brother did nominate, said he put an eye patch and a knife on the bear.
Well, Kelly suggested we call them the marauding bears.
I just want to say, these bagels are really so good.
I made them like an hour ago.
Well done.
Neither did I. I was very nervous, but it was actually very simple. A lot of time, though.
If Rick can do it, anyone can do it.
So, hey, thank you, Theo. So, Kim?
Okay, I submitted something on Friday, and I recently submitted something today, because we had some changes, so I just went through it. First, welcome and welcome back to our new board members from the RMS community. With recent changes, and I know this came up in this meeting, we're really looking forward to welcoming people back in the building, so if you want to come take a look at RMS, or tour, or look at some classes or anything, just go ahead and give a call to the front office, and we'll make sure that Nicole knows who you are when you ring the bell. We did have a couple today. We had March Intensive started today, so we had a number of high school students show up. I was like, you're not a sub, and you're not a student, so I'm not quite sure who you are. And I was like, oh, March Intensive, so we figured that out. So those students were here today, very enthusiastic, had a great time. I'll kind of jump in a little bit. Just a quick update, I'm sure many people are curious about, today was our first day with students at RMS in terms of our mask welcoming. Quick, non-scientific observation today, because of the way the doors are set up, we basically have to open the doors for everybody to come in in the morning, so Nissa and I, the associate principal, are standing there, opening the doors, letting everybody in, so we can do a pretty good count. We probably had at the beginning of the day between seventy-five and eighty percent of the people coming and still went asked. I think just because they felt like it was, one, it's habit, two, it's something that's, they know some of their friends need to remain masked, so we do. By the end of the day, that number had fallen off, so we have people who are gaining comfort with the idea of being unmasked after two years. And part of it too is that, I wrote a little bit on Friday, just remember the sort of contextual part of this, to us, two years seems like a long time. To sixth graders, that's thirty-three percent of their school career, they've been in masks. So to switch out of masks as a sixth grader is kind of a big deal. They haven't done it before. But we're working through it. It's gonna norm slowly, but I think we'll get to the point where everybody's comfortable and everybody's doing something that would be helpful to the community. We wanted to thank, we had our professional development day yesterday, we wanted to thank the PTO for lunch, for coffee, and for a great book fair that they put together. They got a lot of donated books from the community, so we all could choose a couple of books that we could read. They went all over the place. And in a nod to my sort of nonlinear, random way, they were also totally unorganized, which was kind of cool, because you had to look through all of them to see what you did. And then we got a really nice bookmark as well, so. Busy couple of weeks since the last meeting. I sat down to write this, and I'm like, oh, it's only been three weeks, nothing's happened. Oops, a lot has happened. So we had eighth graders met with the counselors at the high school to discuss course selection. Seventh grade families did their check-in with our counselors last week. Almost two counselors met via Zoom, it's another bonus of COVID. Almost all the seventh grade families, so they're sort of halfway through middle school, checking, seeing how everybody's doing. Sixth graders, we had another outside speaker come in. We talked about, this is a really cool presentation about basically how brainwaves can be used to control machines now. So you can have prosthetics that basically run off of thought, or even thought to text, as opposed to voice to text. So it was pretty cool. Math counts, we placed eight of the top twelve in the regional meet, including the top four, so we had a state meet at the end of the month. We've got a schedule next week, we're gonna meet with the Ray and Marion Prosperance as a very introductory, short meeting, basically setting up electives, so that we can get people's elective choices, so we can build our master schedule over April break. During our PD yesterday, we had offered, and that's at the end of the document, we'd offered a number of things that people could do that would be helpful for them going forward. The question about scheduling sort of took off. Took on a life of its own. It was one of the first things that we did, had about forty-five people there, and after an hour, they said we want to keep going. So they kept going, and then they wanted to come back. Another forty people from two to three in the afternoon in a professional development. Which, if you've ever been to a professional development day, that'll tell you something about the enthusiasm that people have. If your choices are go do something, or work in your room, and people came and did something, people are actually moving forward with this with an idea. It's a complex situation, but there's basically a chance, right now, because of some personnel changes, to make some changes in how we organize the Richmond School. And move it to a more, I guess, something that's even more based in equity and social emotional learning and individualization, so move to smaller teams, more specific skill learning, et cetera. So we're trying, we have another meeting tomorrow, staff meeting, I think we're pretty much set. I think we're pretty much set for staff meetings from here on out to try to figure out how exactly we think this works. But that's something that is sort of gaining. Uh, last Friday, we had a pretty cool organization, we're a pretty cool event, I was approached on Wednesday of last week by a number of students, three students from our sage group came in and they originally said, we want to stage a walkout on Friday. And I was like, oh, what did we do wrong? And they said, no, we want to walk out because of the impending legislation in Florida. Called the Don't Say Gay Bill. Laws against transgender youth in Texas. And they said, no, we feel very, I was helped out, they said, we feel very supported on R S, RMS, but we need to offer our support for other students, so I said, okay, let's call it a round. Because those of us who've been doing this for a while, walkout implies that we're not. So, uh, we organized that the students took the lead on it. So between one and one-twenty, we probably had between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five students come outside. Spoke in support of those students who are being affected in other places, we had a number of community members who met on the sidewalk to offer support. It was a really sort of a cool day in terms of students organizing to support other people and support themselves, and I, a lot of the adults were talking afterwards and I said, one of the things that I think adults don't understand is that in situations like this, for some adults, this is sort of a nebulous concept of gender expansive youth. But for our students, these are their friends. So these aren't laws that are attacking people they don't know. These are laws that are affecting people they've been going to school with for six years. And that changes the whole dynamic of what's going on. So that was something that was nice for us to see. We also have another group, seventh graders, they did a or seventh grade social studies in terms of what, I don't know what the new term is, what used to be called westward expansion. They did a whole unit on the Trail of Tears. They talked about land acknowledgement. They had expressed an interest of creating land acknowledgement statement in our department from middle school. So they're now meeting Thursday as a bunch, uh, mistakey. And Mrs. Officer to sort of try to come up with a statement that we can go for. Let's see, undertaking a benefit dinner for the Ukraine. Nurse Abby went ahead and gave that the go-ahead for the twenty-third. So we're going to create something, Austin is going to help us cook Ukrainian food. We'll get more information. Yep, the high school students are here for March Intensive. We're planning two parental roundtables for April break again. Now that we can let people back into the building, things are sort of exploding. I'm going tomorrow to a conference that's been set up through U E I examining sort of strong schools and divided times, uh, how schools can help sort of bridge the gap and ever widening scene engulf between people. I'm heartened by it because our students are pretty able to talk to each other, even disagree with each other. Despite the lack of adult role models. And they're only twelve weeks of school. We're also trying to gear up towards the end of the year. One of the things that happened when max mask protocols were relaxed was we got a ton of emails about, what about graduation, what about this? I'm like, it's March, we'll be okay, we're going to try to plan for it, um, but obviously we. I would just say, again, sort of thank you to the incredible support that we felt at RMS for the last two years from the board. Uh, and looking forward to actually being able to meet people in person. I've been sitting on the pandemic response committee for two years with people who I've never actually seen in real life, which is sort of a weird concept to think of. I've been meeting with these people for a long time every two weeks. And in everything, so I'm looking forward to a time when we can sit down and smile at each other and talk. So that's, uh, that's my report.
Thank you, Tim.
The twenty-third, is that April twenty-third, I'm assuming, for the dinner? On March twenty-third. Looks like next week.
Yeah. Want to strike while the iron's hot.
Yeah, because I'm quick, I was also just wanted to say, uh, that I just think it's wonderful that these kids are so engaged in what they believe in, that they feel supported to do that, and as we saw with the charity bagels as well, I think, I think it's wonderful. Kudos.
Yeah, and one of the things that we, we realize is that we have a number of people who have ties to. Become evident and we're trying to work.
Any other questions?
Is your March twenty-third meeting for incoming parents online or in person?
It's online. So Ray School is at seven and Mary Cross is at seven.
I forgot an email about it, but I'll look back and chat.
Yeah, and we're going to try to make sure that we can record it, if we can figure out how to do that. Um, so that people can come. And it's really just, we'll do bigger meetings and school tours, which we have.
Leo and Theo, you guys, I know you're in the middle of, uh, March Intensive, so if you want to leave, you don't have to sit around through the whole meeting, but.
We love having you here.
Hi, so for, in terms of the mask welcome today, um, I did, I got what I didn't expect, I asked my middle schooler as he was going out door, maybe chased him with a mask, saying, can you take a mask with you? And he said, no, thank you. So I thought I would come to a school full of people without masks and I was wearing mine. And, um, it was about eighty percent, Dr. Chapman came in today to talk to us and check things out and he thought it was about eighty percent wearing and twenty percent weren't, and as usual, we worried about how that would play out and our students lead the way and surprise us all the time about how easily and kindly they deal with things and how things are a non-issue for them and are a huge issue for us, so. We were happy, and so we'll see how it goes, but they're doing well with it. Uh, we have, we're the Bears. And yes, there is a mascot that someone went out and purchased a day after we found out we were the Bears and it's been wearing it everywhere, so that's been pretty exciting. And the mayor has come to school um, and been waving at students as they come in the door and makes appearances, so that's been, been good. Our logo contest or design contest will end at the beginning of May, so we'll have a new logo that hopefully will be official, but the marauder was more like a clip art logo and no one, and it's different everywhere you look, so this one will be actually official and hopefully will look the same um, in terms of branding, Hanover High School, so. Um, we are state champs in Nordic skiing for the boys and girls hockey since the last time, so that felt pretty good. And we had a chorus concert, the Masterworks Concert, our chorus does its more, what we call serious concert in the winter, orchestra and chorus, it was beautiful, it was hard not to imagine we weren't, like I thought it was a professional performance, they were amazing for anyone who was there. I brought someone from the outside who doesn't work here and they, so they forgot that they weren't at a professional concert, so. Um, if you ever have a chance to go to our concerts, they're they're amazing. Uh, March Intenses is in full swing, we're really, really proud of it, you're welcome to come and see people. Um, we're proud that it made it through the pandemic. We shut down right after the first MI, uh, that we shut down that week of MI and did modifications and survived those modifications, last year was all local and it was still really successful, now it's people are going within four hours of Hanover Plus are here and it's working out well too, so really proud of the program and, and that it survived the whole way through. And we're working a lot on sectioning for next year right now and trying to figure out where to put our resources and be able to run the classes, and by the way, the E, the E lab report for E music is fully, they're stocked. All the fundraising worked out and they're ready to go, and so we're going to run that course in the fall, so. Sometimes you don't need budget money to get it done.
Kim?
You had a, a safety alert that went out recently and I'm, I in a brief moment, just curious to know how the response has been to that, but more broadly, I'm wondering if there needs to be a more
Yeah.
focused, intentional discussion about substance use and, and are we doing what we should be doing, what we can be doing, what we ought to be doing?
So we started those conversations today, actually, I mean, we've had those conversations all along. Um, but we started it today, is there something else we could do, is there an educational campaign? Like that alert created through the education to the kitchen table, right, like parents, here you go, start having the conversations, you might not know how to have them, but you gotta have them because.
And maybe I might be ahead of myself, so I don't think, not every board member probably got.
Board members on those, okay. So we had, recently we had three students go to the hospital, not from school, but they went to the hospital, um, for taking something that looks like Xanax, that might be Xanax, that might not be Xanax. And the, um, and the police wanted us to alert everybody and we wanted to alert everybody. Um, and so we sent it out, thought it was better for people to know than not know. Um, so they could have conversations about prescription drugs with their kids and what you know, dangers of that, but also danger of taking things when you don't know where they come from and they might not be what you think they are. So I sent out an alert to parents, was it Monday? It's been Monday. Yeah, just letting everybody know. And.
What, a student that was distributing them or selling them or?
It's an ongoing case with the police, but likely. Yeah, so, so the police are investigating it, it it just felt like it was, I mean, there's stuff that goes on all the time in high school and we were dealing with the whole population of the town and it's and all of the great things within the population, all the bad things with the population, so the, the fact that people might be doing substances is not a surprising um, fact to anyone who works with high school students and anyone who's raised them, that that might be happening. But the, and, and I think we're always trying to work to make sure it's not. And we're always working to, to make sure we, our students are educated surrounding that, but this seemed like a higher level community issue that was you know, sort of like a fire, right, where we just wanted everyone to know so that they could be on the lookout, so we explained what the pills look like and we alerted the parents and the students to it.
So, the kids are all right?
All the kids are all right.
And what is Xanax, is that a? And like, so is mellow or is it?
It's a schedule for, it's, it's not overly prone to abuse, but it, we don't know if that's what it really is.
Right.
Being sold as that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I, I, I wanted to bring it up tonight just so that board members were familiar with the situation, but also to you know, ask the question, is there a broader level discussion that ought to be had, you know, not only at the administrative level, but also at the board level, you know, are we providing the right supports, both financially and, and otherwise for this effort? You know, are we doing it in a coordinated fashion across all of our schools, age appropriately? Things like that, and should this be a topic for a future board discussion?
I mean, we could, if you wanted to know what we were doing, what the middle school's doing, what the elementary school were doing, like that could be something arranged for a board meeting or we could report on that and then people could decide whether they felt that they were comfortable with how everything's being dealt with or whether you felt like more resources needed to be thrown at it.
I was, I was going to also suggest the other school in our community, which is Dartmouth, and, and sort of how we're coordinating with them to some extent to, um, it just occurs to me that, and maybe I always wonder what I don't see that the students get and vice versa, I'm just very angry. Communication channels aren't always the same there, but I, I've seen nothing about, not this specific incident, but you know, substance in general and, and I'm sure that that community also has its fair share of
Right.
um, substance use and so I, something that we should also be probably coordinating with, because I think our older students certainly cross paths with Dartmouth students more than.
They will more after.
Right.
Maybe we had a two-year hiatus.
Right. Always recognize.
No, no offense to the school board, but I, I think that, um, what might be a better way to do this is to have a community forum. Uh, and we did that with bullying, or, um, I think shortly after I got here, we've had a couple of years of not much interaction in the schools with large groups of, of adults, but I think if, if we had a a public forum, there are a lot of different things we could discuss, or just so much when you think about, so we've always, this has been an issue for us to discuss in schools since I think I was middle school or earlier. But, um, but now we've got school or states all around New Hampshire that have legalized marijuana for one thing. So it's readily available. And there are all sorts of different forms just of marijuana that, that students are, are experimenting with. And with these other drugs and with, with the prevalence of fentanyl at this point, where one one bit of curiosity could turn into an emergency room visitor worse. Uh, it probably is time for us to educate ourselves as adults, I'm sure we could find somebody who's qualified to do that for us, have a, a forum and and, uh, probably draw a lot of folks.
Separate issue. In your notes, you mentioned that there's going to be an upgrade of about three hundred and fifty computers.
Yes.
What is happening with the old three hundred and fifty computers?
It's a good question, are, they usually get repurposed into carts and things that, that we use, but a lot of them are actually dying. But, but they, they get repurposed.
So donating or anything of that nature doesn't make too much sense.
They, in the past then, um, they have donated some before because that is one of our disposal of assets, um, avenues. Uh, so I will say that I don't think we've done anything recently because we've been using them. What they normally will do with, if, if there's machines coming out of Dresden that they can't use in Dresden, they'll repurpose them to know which M Ray School for the littles to use, right, because, you know, maybe, right, the processors might not be large enough to handle what, you know, they need at the high school, but they're okay for, um, for the elementary schools. Um, so they do repurpose quite a bit of them if they still have life to them. Um, and we repurpose them within first and then if, if nobody, you know, picks up on those, then we sometimes will offer them to outside. But usually, we haven't done that in a while because normally when they're offered outside, the letter of thanks will come to the board so that you know where they are.
Any other questions? Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
And the access points are in. We saw.
So, moving on to policies.
So these are second readings again, these are two of the policies that were read at SAU as well.
Questions, discussion? Topic template for subsequent year meeting. This is, well, we went over the agendas and they're sort of similar. So we, we did not, I guess, in our Hanover discussion, if we have anything we wanted added or removed or changed.
I thought Kelly wanted to add legislative update.
Oh, that's, that's what it was in April. Before our board retreat.
Yeah, and then I was saying that, um, in the facilities updates, which in this one is, um, in August.
Yep.
But basically that, um, as recommended by the Dresden Budget Committee, which Rick was on last year. And here, um, you know, kind of encouraging, um, kind of a more longer-term view of facilities and so um, sometimes it's been kind of what things have broken over the summer, um, but kind of looking more of a kind of capital expenditure type of plan, um, but we acknowledge that um, August is a very quick turnaround for that vision to come to fruition, but basically that's kind of what we're talking about in this ongoing topic template, that's kind of the transition we'd be talking about when we're talking about.
Your strategy for facilities, somebody?
The other thing that we've mentioned at Hanover is just making sure that the mentions of retreat topics and such might align with our actual calendar, so I think we have for example, determining retreat topics in this meeting and then discussing them in April and then we don't actually have the retreat on our calendar at all. Um, which might be good to put on the calendar, especially for new board members and such. On this, sorry, on our template, it's on our calendar, sorry, template, words matter.
Any other additions, subtractions moving of our template? Thank you. Retreat topics. The retreat is scheduled for Saturday, May fourteenth. We haven't picked a location yet. In Hanover, we talked about inviting the legislation, legislators and discussing the strategic planning. And we're going to talk about, uh, the Patel work.
In all likelihood, yeah.
Does anyone else have any other additional topics they want to add here? Personally, I looked at all the facilities, right, in the budget. What's that? No, that was part of the, didn't we put into the budget fifty or sixty thousand dollars?
We didn't. And we ended up not adding it. We're going to try to fund it through surplus monies. And so that's what Kim's talking about here with trying to start to kick that off this summer so that in August, we can bring an early capital assess, a capital assets plan. You know, without years. And then we can engage with folks to do that kind of work, to do a formal one. So that by the time that you get your strategic plan in place, that they should be on the same timeframe, so that hopefully by the time we get to next May, we would have a more formal version of that.
I'm sorry, yeah, because I thought we had. At the last.
We were gonna fund it, but Jamie said, don't fund it. We should be able to hopefully take it out surface.
That's my comment is we get, like, now, I thought, yeah, somebody, but it'd be good to start, I guess.
I, I would really like to add, at least sharing the climate action plan that came out of the Hanover High School council or the environmental studies course. I mean, it was shared with me this, just a couple of weeks ago by someone who actually called me and said, will you be committed to doing something with this? I vote for you for this.
Retreat topic or something for the board?
Well, I, I think, I think it should be a retreat topic.
But we can't take any deliberative action during a retreat, can we?
But can we just talk about it?
Sure, you can receive information, give you presentations.
Well, I would just love to have it shared with the board. I'm, I mean, maybe I'm the only person who didn't get it or hadn't seen it, but.
It was shared a couple of years ago.
Right.
They updated all the time.
I was gonna say, I think, I think that's definitely should be a piece of our strategic plan, right? I mean, I, I don't think we can do a strategic plan without thinking about that element.
Oh, I completely agree. I, it's just, I've been on the board since the end of last summer and I've never heard about it. So.
We had it a couple of years ago, but I think it kind of went in hiatus over COVID. So.
Right.
So do we want to make it a retreat topic or just have a presentation at one of the next presentations? That's what I was, that's what I was thinking that.
Okay.
We make it a public, available presentation, so called an update.
Yeah. That would be great. Whatever you want to call it.
The council?
Yes.
Julie? The climate, uh,
Yeah.
document, is that a council product or is that a?
No, it's a sustainability.
Studies, yeah.
Could you coordinate with? Can you coordinate with them? We'd love to have them come in and talk to the Dresden Board, maybe in April or May. Sure.
Okay, great.
Neil, um, so a couple of things. One, just a clarification. So if it's, if the retreat's going to be a, a warned public meeting of the board, I mean, you could make decisions at that meeting. There's nothing that says that we can't make a decision. I'm sure there were no one who was at a stores plan that morning.
We don't traditionally, traditionally, we have not made decisions, but it's going to be a warned meeting, so you would be allowed to. The other thing I want to mention, I don't know sort of where we landed on this conversation during the S A U meeting about training. But if we wanted to use portion of the retreat to make sure that everybody was up to speed, for example, on New Hampshire open meeting law, that might be a good use of.
So who would give that training? Can we ask someone from N H?
You could ask someone from N H S B A to do that. Um, and I, you know, depending on timing and arrangement, that should be fine doing it. The third thing that, um, I want to bring up, especially to the chair, um, because I was going to bring this up later on during future agenda topics. I would like, on behalf of the Norwich Board, twenty minutes or so on the agenda, probably at the next meeting, but maybe also in their treats, talk about the waiting study in Vermont. Because there's a potential there for a very significant impact on taxpayers in our town as a result of some legislations being considered this session. That is going to have dramatic implications, I think, for the entire district. And so.
Good, like, good impact?
No, bad impact. Like, we're looking at a potential thirty percent tax rate increase in Vermont. Norwich, sorry, not Vermont, Norwich. So, uh, you know, I want to put it out there. One, I'd like some time on a very near future Dresden agenda so that we can get everybody up to speed on it. But you're still going to be on May fourteenth, right, sort of tail end of the session, where we'll have probably a better sense as to what's going to play out. And I think it should be brought up at the retreat then.
Is that, that's a very true.
We could have the legislative update. If we're doing that.
Sorry.
Would that not be part of the legislative update if we're doing that?
Oh, we certainly could, but I just want to, I mean, this, this one in particular is a big deal.
So we were going to invite the New Hampshire legislators. Do we want to invite your Norwich? Should you guys will take that?
You can, yeah. Then I would, if that's what you want to happen, I would issue those invitations now because they're still in session in May, right?
So I'll, I'll do the invites to our legislators here in Hanover. If someone can reach out to whoever it is in Vermont.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna miss this.
I can certainly issue the invitation.
Okay.
Just, and then Deb, could you talk with N H S B A about maybe getting someone to give us a
My only caveat to that, so I seem to remember the last time that we had someone come to, um, our retreat. It got a little in the weeds and it got a little lengthy and we have a lot of things we want to talk about. So I think, um, we should just, as you plan it, maybe look at the timeframes that we have and see if it's worth having someone come for half an hour.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah.
We're on a hard agenda.
If it's worth it to them. And if not, then they, you know, there are other opportunities to achieve that.
Well, there's a webinar on the fourth of April on right to know law.
And talking open meeting, right?
Same thing for both.
Right. With the New Hampshire School Board Association and Kim said she got a PDF as a result of attending that, that covered everything. So maybe, you know, I can go to the webinar and maybe that's all we need is. Oh, yeah, that I'd be only gonna have.
Well, see what they had, if you can, see what they got.
Okay.
Okay.
I remember at the last board chairs meeting, there was some discussion about what should these elements be because by choosing the one thing, you're also choosing not to do the other things. They kind of trying to figure out what, so is the open meeting the one thing we need to learn about? What about all those other things?
Well, someone that's gonna get us in trouble. I don't know what other, what other things you're talking about.
Well, I know equity came up.
We're talking, how long are we talking to retreats? Like, the retreats typically.
We've had half days before, got all day, really, when it first came here, you, you had, uh.
Well, let's pick.
The Hubbard Center.
There we go. He just left. Four hours for the retreat or do we want?
I, I think a half a day is reasonable.
So is that twelve hours? I think I'm on an eight-hour workday. Four hours.
To help us answer that question, um, so what is on the retreat agenda? Cause I know we, we suggested things at the Hanover meeting. I don't know if Norwich had a separate discussion. And so I just want it, do we know what that shortlist last slash long list is right now?
That's. That was the agenda items. That's what we're trying to.
We're just creating a list now and then I think in April is when we pare it down to.
Okay, so we'll have another discussion.
Right. So, so far that we've, when we were at the Hanover meeting, there was a lot of discuss, discussion about doing another legislative meeting. And when we did that last time, if you recall, at the Richmond Middle School, we had legislators from, from both sides of the river. And we had sort of a general presentation and then we broke into our respective states. And then had the legislative, the fever dive with the legislators in those sessions. I don't know if that, if you felt that was useful or not, but we could set something like that up. But if, if we're going to have a training, I don't know that a thirty-minute training is going to be worth having someone travel up here, maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, unless we did something by Zoom.
So, um, just, so I'm going to repeat myself from the Hanover meeting, but just since we're adding to the list. So I actually think the strategic plan needs to be an, an agenda item here. I think the most important things for this, because there's obviously an existing group that talks to the strategic plan, but I just want us all as board members to understand what it is, because this is going to be a strategic plan of the board will adopt hopefully. Um, and so just kind of get on this page about what it is, what it isn't, and the timeline. I think it's really important, kind of who is going to be involved, because I'm pretty sure we're going to be asked of all board members to participate probably somehow in some venue for that. So, um, that's one thing. Another thing that I think, um, is kind of board goals, like kind of as a group thinking about that, we, we will be establishing board goals. And if you're going to kick off that thought process, that's a great time to brainstorm. Um, another thing is, um, how, you know, kind of really thinking retreat and we're thinking relax, you know, kind of kicking our shoes back and thinking bigger picture, like how do we improve? How, what we do in meetings? Um, what have we learned? We, we tend not to really reflect a lot and discuss improvements on, on how we do. And so I think having a discussion about, um, how can we consolidate meetings? What, uh, committees do we not need? Uh, what's, what don't we have that it seems like we need? You know, something like that, because we tend to kickstart every March, it's just kind of using what our existing committee structure is and our existing meetings and, and all of that. And if there's any sort of lessons learned, um, I think we could kind of talk about that in the, in that retreat format.
Neil?
I would make the suggestion that chair work together with the administration to try to take all of the ideas that have been brought forward this evening and pare it down to a reasonable agenda.
So when you say chair, which chair are you referring?
Well, the one that I'm looking at right now.
The four chairs, because this is.
If that was how the chair wanted to operate, then sure.
So.
But I just wanted to walk away from the meeting tonight with the sense that somebody is going to own the creation of the agenda here.
The four chairs will be the four chairs. Now, Kim's point about looking at how we're organized and what we do. Part of the strategic plan is the government's govern, governance section, right? And it, wouldn't that fall into their?
So I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time.
What's that?
I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I don't think we need to incorporate that into a systems level, because I know we're talking like the level three kind of pieces. It also includes the budget, includes a bunch of other things. And if we can just say, hey, we should always have, for example, in a four chairs meeting, which I know I'm not four chairs, but I attended and made a comment, we could look about consolidating our meetings and can we do concurrent meetings? And I know Jay was gonna ask our legal about that. So I guess the question is, what does legal say? You know, that kind of a thing.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Great. So I'm just saying, like, we can make improvements, you know, sooner than later.
So we'll add that to the list?
I got it.
And when's our next, we haven't called the four chairs, maybe, anyway. That's right. Okay. So we'll probably have one in the next two weeks. And we will have something to bring back to each of the school boards in April. But are we fine with a, well, speaking as Dresden, are we fine with a four-hour retreat? And do we want to do it at stores bonded?
No.
Invite our legislators and we have some sort of lunch with them, be it, you know, a meal with them, lunch or something like that, and discuss with them.
There could be two hours in the morning, lunch, and then two hours.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Have we ever actually talked about before subgroups of strategic planning, who's doing what?
Yeah. So I've got.
Have you actually talked about it?
Sure, I can run around quickly. Right now, the chairs have each volunteered to spearhead one of, one of four subcommittees. And one of the things they'll do when they actually meet is decide if they're aptly categorized, but like, there's essentially an academic one, a student support, uh, social emotional learning committee. Uh, there is systems and operations, and then there's the facilities. And so Ben has academic one. Lisa volunteered for the social emotional one. Rick's doing systems and operations and Tom has agreed to spearhead the facilities since he deals with every single board meeting in Norwich.
Right. So if anyone else has any additional things I'd like to see on the list of agenda topics, please email one of the chairs and we'll add it to the list. So moving on to, uh, business requiring action, does someone want to make a motion by consent?
Move group items, B, C, D, and E by consent.
Lou.
Travis.
Riddell, yes.
Carmen, yes.
Amy, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Mary, yes.
McCollum, yes.
Marcelo?
Tivasi, yes.
You said?
Kristy, yes.
Johnson, yes. Thank you. And moving to committee reports, um, do we have any reports from any of the existing committees at this point?
I don't know if this is technically a committee, but from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, I'm just going to repeat.
You're the liaison, so you're right.
Yep. Well, as Kim reported, and then it eventually made it into the newspaper, but she broke the news. The, the New Hampshire Legislature killed House Bill twelve fifty-five. They basically said it's inexvenient to legislate. And I think this is entirely the result of things like three thousand people sending messages, being against the bill, the school board being against the bill and writing the resolution. They really were not expecting such an outcry and they're going to fiddle with it and they're going to come back with it in the next legislative session. But at the moment, it's, unless it comes up in the next two days and a majority decides to do something other than what the education committee is recommending, it's, it's, um, asleep right now. It's not dead.
Yep. Um, so relating to that, I want to let the board know that, um, a former work colleague of mine actually sits on the Riven Dell School Board. And every now and then we talk, you know, because we're the other interstate school district. And he is very in tune with some of the stuff that's going on related to some of the voucher stuff that's being considered up there. And he's quite alarmed by it. And, um, he was wondering if there was some interest in, in our board maybe getting involved um, in some, you know, advocacy stuff, or at least, you know, from a, a informational standpoint of all of us getting up to speed on this sort of thing. I said, let's wait until after we have our reorg meeting. Because I don't think that I'm the right person for that. I just, I, I got a little bit too much going on the Vermont side to keep it all straight. I would like to pass this connection off to another board member in Dresden, hopefully a Hanover board member. I'm kind of peeking at Deb because I think the match would be good. But to establish, like, I can do the introduction, establish the relationship, but we would have a, a little bit more of a connection with Riven Dell on some of these issues.
And so what are, he's thinking we would put together a joint?
Nope. I, at this stage, I think it's just a matter of the two boards having a way to communicate with one another. He's got some perspectives that he's shared with his board on some of the voucher issues that are going on right now. Yeah. Yeah, that I think might resonate with this board as well. And what I could see coming out of the relationship, are there times when maybe the two boards decide to issue joint statements or come up with joint resolutions or testify together, you know, before the legislature, those sorts of things to leverage, maybe a, a very small economy of scale on these things.
And I know that our compact has language in there about, uh, one state cannot detrimentally impact the other state's students. Has that, have you guys started talking about that?
We have, yeah, um, not on the Vermont side, but this Riven Dell board member, he and I have talked about this before as to, you know, is this finally the issue that might trip that clause of the interstate agreement? I don't know. I don't know that we're there yet. But I just, I want to be able to hand off this relationship to somebody else on the board that might be able to just. But I just, I want to be able to hand off this relationship to somebody else on the board that might be able to just run with it better than, than I could.
I'm happy to be put in touch with him.
Okay, so I can do the introductions and get the. Ribbon Dell, so that's fairly.
So would this not be able to trip, uh, a law in one state not being tripped the other state with that, in fact, our tax increase thing, because that would, in fact.
Don't.
That's a good point.
Don't know. Don't know.
How about subject systems? Lisa?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to not, not to add to Deb's workload, but I had a conversation with the Lebanon School Board Chair today. She had called me about a couple of things and it just occurs to me that it, it might be worthwhile to have some sort of a relationship. With them as well, um, especially if we're trying. To make some powerful statements about, um, changes we see coming and how they, how we might be able to work together.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other committee reports? For the Chair, I don't have anything to report at this time. Moving on to Jane.
I have to report that I broke a tooth today and, and really uncomfortable talking, but, um, I, I do want to quickly mention that. As we talk about retreats and, um, we talk about strategic planning. We're making solid, steady progress on. The sort of prerequisite work with the strategic plan that we talked about with Portrait of a Graduate. We had an initial organizational meeting, more or less with the Tal. We've scheduled the first formal design meeting and, um, the Tal will. They will manage that meeting completely and then Robin and I will receive subsequent training with the Tal. To manage the three follow-up meetings, that first meeting is about a two and a half hour session. And the three follow-up meetings are about an hour and a half. And we should have essentially our work almost complete with Portrait of a Graduate at, at the conclusion of that fourth meeting. And the intent is to have that done by May. We, uh, we now have our board chairs designated for our subcommittees. And so we're working on templates for that work as we speak. So that, uh, each of those chairs will be paired with a senior administrator. To get those off the ground in advance of and sort of parallel with the Portrait of a Graduate work. We just don't feel we have the time to wait until the portrait is done before those, those committees, subcommittees actually begin their work. So that will happen. And what's, uh, encouraging to me is sort of in, in different realms, we have. Three, uh, important committees doing work that will ultimately converge. So the Equity Committee made, I, I feel like, as Neil outlined earlier. The Equity Committee made some strides, I think, at the last meeting. We separated and we began to work on a, on a skeleton of, um, an actual policy regarding equity. And, um, we had people with some divergent views working together, um, and actually, uh, put together, uh, the, the heart of a document that we. We borrowed essentially from, uh, Vermont School Board Association, that, uh, a model policy, but we've now, we're adapting it to make it our own. Meanwhile, the Evaluation Committee is almost done with its work and, uh, and it's, it's pretty significant work. It's, it's a committee that was, that was, um. Launched as a result of not, not the last negotiation with the HEA, but the prior one. And we agreed upon a new framework for the entire, um, our entire educational program with regard to, uh, teaching. And we've adopted the Dan, the Charlotte Danielson model, that's our intent anyway. Uh, which is a, a widely used, internationally used, uh, framework for teaching. That focuses on professional development and focuses, focuses on enhancing, enhancing teacher practice. And so the evaluation supervision process becomes less of a gotcha and more of a collaborative effort to make sure that we're all trying to continuously improve. That work has advanced to the point where we're, we're just rewriting policies. And, um, as you saw in Tim's presentation, there's already training work being done on the Danielson model. And the, probably the key change for that is going to be. That, uh, instead of us going through what sometimes feels like a very perfunctory observation process every single year with every teacher. Teachers that have already been identified as being quite proficient in their craft will be on a three-year cycle. And in the intervening two years, they'll have a chance to do things like action research. Conference presentations, other things to, to, to sort of showcase their professional development and have that count toward their evaluation. And then our, our, our more novice teachers will have a much more formal structured approach. And once teachers achieve tenure, again, they'll have the opportunity to do things that are more creative. And then, um. And then the third, obviously, is the Strategic Planning Committee itself, as, as, as these two very important academic pieces. And the equity piece takes shape, they all need to be housed within that strategic planning context. So we end up, you know, it'd be nice if we had a strategic plan done first and then, and then had these other committees doing work. But as we said from the outset, um, for whatever reason, we're, we're in a position where we're essentially building a foundation under a building. And so, um, once we have that underway and outline. It's, it's, it will provide us a lot more structure and direction as we do all the things that we do. We shouldn't simply be relying on a, an agenda topic template. We should actually have a plan that we're working. And, uh. That's, uh, till the bitter end, what I'm, uh, I'm committed to and I, I know our, our team is too, so. That's my report.
Questions and comments from Jay.
Just preparation, so that there's a meeting coming up on Monday. And that, that is, sorry, has that one been warned? That is, we're, it has not been warned and we're, we're actually thinking we don't have to, so we're going to, um. I'll have an, I mean, that's more. I would, or I would, if you're going to extend an invitation to the board and the board can join. And it's covering topics that would fall into the board's purview, we got, we, we need to warn it. Well, I guess topics that fall under the board's purview would be like, what do you aspire for, for your children? It's, that's the, the. Still argue that's part of strategic planning. I mean, we can take it offline, but I think the right thing to do is to warn that meeting.
Okay, we, we can talk about it.
When you don't invite the board.
Well, the, the larger issue is that we're hoping to do it by Zoom, because we have so many people, we're trying to. Let the. So, sure, but then the, the body would need to. Attend in person or forum, but it needs to attend in person.
No, i- i- if it's a school board.
Yep.
But if the school board's not invited. No, this is like Portrait of a.
Why don't I follow up with Rick and, and Jay offline about this and one of your reference statute, but I.
I'm just curious as part of that, if, if somehow it happens as a non-meeting or however, you know, it does not involve the board and then it's reported out. Publicly to at a board meeting or at this, um. The retreats, I'm wondering if that is more what you want to achieve? And I guess that's the question, right? So you guys talk about online, that would be my, if you don't want board input per se at this stage, then.
I have, I have a call tomorrow with Love and Star Peter, so. We'll make sure we're on board.
Any other questions or comments for Jay?
Okay, well, you heard good news about our moved mask welcome. That was across the board from all of the schools. I heard positive things and it sounds like the elementary schools had fewer students wearing masks. They estimated about fifty percent of our students at the elementary school. So I think we're easy into it nicely and, um, I'll keep you posted as how that's going. And what our numbers are looking like, they're still reporting any cases to me and it's remained very consistent. So I'll keep looking at that and making sure we're still going in the right direction. We have begun our curriculum work once again this week. I'm meeting with the elementary first and second grade and next week I'll meet with the math team at the high school. And on the thirtieth, we'll meet with all of the other subject areas of the high school and have the SAT day. It's a free day for us to actually do curriculum work for the groups that are not proctoring. So that will be a big day for us, but we'll continue that work through April. One other thing I'll add to Jay's discussion about the evaluation piece is we, um, over the past two weeks have extended that to the administrative team. And I've started to really look at celebrating the Danielson framework. I have teachers across the schools volunteer, many at the high school and middle school. Allowing us to bring several administrators at the same time into their classrooms to do twenty to thirty minute observations. And following that, the administrators who are involved, um, met just to go through the Danielson rubric. Domains two and three to see where we all stood and how it rates, that was really fruitful effort. And I feel like we're making good progress in that area as well. So that I'm going to try to continue, maybe to do it just a couple more times over the course of the school year. So we're in good shape when we actually begin doing and using the Danielson framework. And that's it for my presentation tonight.
Any questions, comments, or what?
Thank you.
Moving on to Jamie.
Yeah, it's just. I was checking out Ribbon Dell's page. Boy, their CLA is below ninety-two and in tactics.
Can you translate that? What did she say?
The CLA is below, it, it makes sense for the Vermont folks here. The CLA, which is similar in New Hampshire to the equalized, uh, that equalized valuation. Or you know, equalized valuation, they call it a CLA common level of the period. And it adjusts the tax rate and so the more it drops, the larger you tax rate. It's not a good situation. Reassess, reevaluate. Um, anyway, so, uh, let me get back to you folks here. I'm safe, reading through their annual report. You know, it's sad when things like that fascinate me, isn't it? So, when you speak to one of these star leaders tomorrow, would you ask them where the legal letter is so I could have my audit finalized? They'll save us a call. So we have a draft audit posted because we're still waiting for the legal letter. They have to, the minute the audit comes out in draft format, you have to send a letter to legal so that they can, you know, formally. File a letter with the auditors as this status, if anything's changed. So we're just waiting for that to occur. This will go into final format as soon as they get that letter. And then we'll bring the governance documents to you, um, in the next, uh, month, which is fine, because it's not a part of the official audit documents. They have to be filed with the state and the Feds. We did find, we came in very close to where we thought we would. The easiest part to read is the last three pages, or pages, excuse me, which is the schedules, um. The governance letter, we have no findings, the audit is, is fine. The governance letter does mention a few things, I've seen it, we're just gonna, we're waiting for some responses. There's some. Repeat comments that we know about. You know, one is about maintaining the treasurer, maintaining a separate set of books. Um, and, you know, our treasurer's very engaged, it's just one thing that you need to require. So we'll continue to work with her to, to work through that. The other one is the manner in which, and we've had this conversation many times. The manner in which we've historically done our budgeting here for Dresden, because we're in interstate district. Is that we budget for general fund and then we run most of the other funds through it out to their own funds. And in New Hampshire, they want you to budget for all your funds when you do that. We haven't embraced that because, um, it will totally skew all of our numbers on our prior historical budgets. I did speak with the head auditor and so next year, um, I said to her, what if we put that out on a separate one article? So we would basically put out, you know, your, your total of your grants funds, your food service funds, your special revenue funds, which are self-supporting funds. You only spend what you take in on a separate article and that would cover that, that governance discussion. Yeah. Yeah, she said that would, that would be fine. She said that's an odd way to do it, most districts don't, but it would, it would meet the guidelines. I think that keeps it cleaner for us, because historically we've always showed, you know, the same type of graphs and charts. And if you go and add another, you know, say million dollars to it, people are going to go, oh my God, it went up by a million. When really, the general fund won't have gone up by a million, right? There are special revenue funds that are outside of the general fund. So we can handle it with a separate one. Yeah, but we'll have that discussion. Yeah, we, we, yeah, we can talk about it. You want to go home, you don't want to talk about it tonight. We'll talk about it next month, we'll bring the letter. And I think that then there was just a few other, uh, mentions of, you know, deposits in some of the student three accounts and, you know, normal stuff that. They do, uh, small samples and they find little things. So that's really, and then what I would like to do, because the, um. Finance Committee is usually interested in having, um, you know, a meeting. We usually meet at the same time that the town's audits come out so that we can do it all at once. And so that does require your permission. Because these documents do belong to the school district and you're the, you know, people in charge of what goes on. So for us to be able to have our auditors come and kind of go through the audits for the different districts with them. And then, um, for them to be able to ask questions about it.
And we'll give you permission.
And you just, at the next meeting, you can just say, you know, you're fine with doing that and allowing for them, you know, to ask questions. Because Kim, Kim would be there as a board member, you know, on the finance committee and I would be there as the person, you know, from the district for the finances, so. They don't really ask about knowledge, they just ask about Dresden. So no, no, um, no, you know, crazy different weird things this year. Which is amazing, because we had to keep telling them that, you know, it was a COVID year, because they keep forgetting.
Any questions or comments for Jim?
And we're working on, we've been having meetings already about all of the bond articles that passed. So we're working towards, um, some, you know, what the steps are through that with the athletic folks. Megan and the coaches and everything, we're going to try to get a hold of our track coach and set up a meeting.
So does the Athletic Advisory Committee, are they intimately involved with anything going forward right now? Do we need to get someone?
No.
As the Chair immediately?
No. No, be, right, because, and I would say that it would be nice if they want to be, but because we have Megan's involved, the coaches involved, myself, Tony. You know, anybody else that is, is, you know, the parents of the baseball parents, we're, we're going to let them come in and be involved, they want to do some fundraising, so. So we're moving along with projects and trying to wrap up some of the ones we have.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have to move into non-public, so people at home, we're going to move into non-public for a few minutes to discuss, uh, teacher nominations for next year. And then we'll come back here and vote on it in public. So do I have someone who wants to move this into non-public?
We'll take a non-public session on the RSA ninety-nine dash eight four three two C personal.
Remember second?
Second.
Yeah. Adele, yes.
Benny, yes.
Carmen, yes.
Nina, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Mary, yes.
McCall, yes.
Marcela?
Tivasi, yes. Kristy, yes, and Tom, will you send us the link again, please, or is it the same one?
Yes, and I already did.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Johnson, yes.
Second.
Yeah. Lilly?
Hartman yes.
O'Neal yes.
Annie yes.
Hartman yes.
O'Neal.
Keeney yes.
Nelson yes, Arius, McConnell yes.
Marjella?
DeBlossy yes.
Kristi yes, and Tom, will you send us the link again, please, or is it the same one?
Yes, and I already did.
Okay, thank you.
And Johnson, yes. Yes.
I'm with Georgia in the meeting at nine twenty-one. Second.
Yeah.
Hartman yes.
O'Neal yes.
Hartman yes.
Keeney yes.
Nelson yes, Arius.
McConnell yes.
Marjella?
DeBlossy yes.
So you doing okay? Johnson, yes, thank you. Hope you feel better, Lisa.
Thank you.
Marjella, have a lobster on me.